All right, Happy New Year, everyone. Welcome to our Committee of the Whole meeting for January 11th. Called meeting to order and asked the Director to proceed with roll call.
Trustee Buckland.
Present.
Uh, regrets, trustee Kertner, trustee Garrel at teleconference.
Here.
Trustee McPherson.
President.
President. Vice Chair McDonald in the hallway on the phone. First Chair Mellon.
Present.
Trustee McCray.
Present.
Chair Petersman.
Present.
Trustee Richards.
Present.
Trustee Swan.
Present.
And student trustee Jacob House.
Present.
Um, approval of the agenda, we have one additional item, Student Transportation of Eastern Ontario Transportation Consortium. It's the title of the item and just a note that was wrongly attributed to our private agenda and correctly belongs in our public, so we're adding it to the agenda and it will follow the capital priorities report. So we all get to wait until the end to hear rec action. We're gonna hear a lot from rec tonight. This could be the rec show.
Trustee.
Uh, approval of the agenda. Trustee McCray. Trustee Buckland. All in favor? What does that carry? Any declarations of conflict of interest? Trustee McPherson?
Uh, I will not take part in the discussion on the addition to the agenda of student transportation.
Yes. Okay, so noted, thank you. Hope that trustee McDonald is here. Um, approval of the minutes and the errors or omissions. Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes. Trustee McCray. Trustee Swan. All in favor? What does that carries? Now move on to our first item of the night, which is review of policies 222, 225, and 421. Turn the floor over to Superintendent of Business Rick Gales to explain why these are here.
Essentially, the ministry has made some technical adjustments to some of the things that they are interested in having boards do. And so we have taken current policies. If we've added some awarding, just some updates, basically, the policies are remaining intact. Technically, we're adding some references and some cross-references and cross-referencing them to updated legislation and board policies are not changing. However, in the Occupational Health and Safety Act, there are provisions that we need to add to our policies that already exist. And so that's why this issue is brought forward to the board, to amend those policies with those technical adjustments.
Why, when they do this, do they not just change the law and we have to follow the law and leave it at that? Why do they tell us that we have to do it this way?
Um, I think that the board was interested in having these policies, but I think the other thing is that there is one or two particular aspects that the board has to pass a motion, having noted that it will review this policy on an annual basis related to health and safety. So these are issues that have arisen due to an accident or some other kind of issue somewhere in the province. And so the ministry is requiring boards to pay attention to these matters a little more closely. Not that we do not, it is just simply a matter of compliance and showing or demonstrating that the board is in fact compliant with the issues that are being raised. And this applies to this report as well as the following.
So in policy 222, we have the addition of line and Occupational Health and Safety Act.
That's correct.
Correct. And in 255, um, the change was just the reference.
That's correct.
Regulation Occupational Health and Safety Act, RSO 19... What does RSO stand for?
RSO. Ontario.
Thank you. RSO Statutes of Ontario 1990. Any comments or questions, trustees? Trustee McCray?
Under violence in the workplace, do we not want to include the definitions associated to violence in the workplace? Something that we might see in that policy?
Well, I think we're...
If I may refer to like, like the various definitions that included in that?
Superintendent Gales?
I think that we try to follow the act as closely as possible so that we're not straying into territory that we're unable to deal with properly. And so I believe that we follow the act as closely as possible.
So the danger in defining them would be that we may not accurately duplicate the intention of the Health and Safety Act and thus take on additional legal liabilities. That's correct. Trustee McCray?
The reason I bring that up, because in the workplace harassment policy, we do define, we do make a definition of harassment. But then in the violence in the workplace policy, and I'm just stating this because I've looked at other policies of organizations that, you know, are required to have the Occupational Health and Safety Manual and that type of thing in their facilities and programs and procedures, a lot of them do include the definitions associated with workplace violence and harassment. That's the only reason I'm asking, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
And I'd be more than prepared to... I have them here, too.
Any other comments? Okay, so I'll treat lack of additional comments that aside from that trustees are okay to recommend these be approved with the review date of, it won't be January 11th, it'll be whatever the board meeting is. Trustee McPherson? I'm just moving the motion. Moved by trustee McPherson, seconded by trustee Swan. The two of the...
Yes, I was just gonna indicate that the review date will be on the actual policy, that it has been reviewed January 11th, 2012. Just specified on the policy to say that it shows...
Review date don't have to be the date that we pass the re...
Oh, okay.
That would be the next board meeting. Anyway, is there anybody opposed to this? Okay, thanks. Then we'll move this on to the board meeting. And that's for policy 222, 225, with the adjustments, with the amendments, additions, and policy 421. Perhaps trustee McCray, you can give...
I agree.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on now to the next item, annual review of policy 424, Occupational Health and Safety. For your Superintendent of Business, Rick Gales?
Again, this is just an example of the ministry or the act requiring the board to have reviewed and on an annual basis and agreed to its policy. Its policy's been in place for a number of years since it was a requirement, and this is simply the annual board review of that, of that policy. The board realizes, of course, that it has a very active Occupational Health and Safety Committee, Central Committee, with representatives in each work location, and it meets on a monthly basis and complies with all of the various acts and regulations and brings forward matters and reviews these issues on an ongoing basis.
Any comments or questions? Trustee McCray?
Um, in accordance with our Occupational Health and Safety and the new legislation that's come out, do we have an early and safe return to work policy? Is that part of our... Would that be part of...
When you were...
Does that fall under... I think, I believe that falls under Occupational Health and Safety.
When you say, "early and safe return to work," now I believe...
Yeah, that would be... Sorry.
I believe you would be referring to someone who might be injured on...
On his job.
Yeah, through HR. There would be a whole process to modify someone's work and bring them back and follow that through.
So we should...
So that would apply to somebody, whether they were hurt at work or at home as well. So we would be compliant in those aspects, yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Anybody opposed then to recommend to the board that the board approve policy 424? Great, thanks very much. Move that on then to the board meeting. The next item in the agenda is capital priorities, and I will turn the floor over to our Chief of Information and Facilities Officer, Mr. Hobbs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chair Petersman asked me, I guess a couple of months ago, to perhaps bring an introductory presentation to board, our committee of the whole, on capital priorities. Capital priorities, I'm still, I'm in the portfolio for four years and still trying to figure out some of the nuances of the portfolio and how we arrived where we did. So substantial proportion of my presentation or my discussion will be just sort of giving you a little bit of background on capital priorities. Just so you know, our department this year, in our design and construction area, we have about, a budget of about $27 million. The substantial proportion of that is tailored towards or directed towards the two major capital construction projects that we have underway. So North Granville District High School and then just the wrap-up of Van Cleek Hill Collegiate Institute. And this is, those funding sources are summarized monthly in your package in Committee of the Whole. From the remainder, we have six other really major funding sources that comprise everything from, you know, roofing fixes, chiller replacements, all the way up to some of the larger projects, which would be more substantial renovations of some or all of the schools. But when we speak about capital priorities specifically, this is really a new term that the Ministry of Education has come out with in the last couple of years to replace what we tended to think of in upper Canada as prohibitive to repair schools. And maybe I'll just take you back a little bit to take you to where that came from. So back in 2002, and this is, I apologize if this sounds like my life story. I'll keep it fairly short. But back in, back in 2002, a few years after the amalgamation of school boards in Ontario, it really represented the first time when the Ministry of Education came out with a kind of cohesive strategy for capital across the province. Previous to that, it had really been the domain of individual school boards to decide what their, what their capital strategy was gonna be and raise and allocate the funds that were necessary to do construction and renovations. And as we saw through the amalgamation process, specifically boards like ours that had, came together from multiple boards, there were radically different philosophies in the predecessor boards with respect to how capital projects would be conducted and how building maintenance, in fact, would be undertaken. So in 2002, the Ministry of Education commissioned condition assessments that were completed on every facility in the province. So a group of engineers went around and spent a matter of hours in all our schools and basically looked at the condition of every single component of those, those schools. They recorded all of those conditions, building conditions, in a piece of software called Recap. And that's a piece of software that's basically hosted by the ministry and breaks every building down into its component parts and then forecasts dates where those parts would have to be replaced or renewed and what the cost would be. The really important part of that, that exercise was that buildings became to be characterized by what they called the FCI or the Facility Condition Index. And that really represented, if you think about it, what they would do is they would say, "over the next few years, what are all the sum total costs of renovations and replacements that we think we'll have to do in this building?" And then, "how does that compare to what it would cost to build a new building?" So if the cost of all the renovations were greater than 70% of the cost of replacement, they said the building was prohibitive to repair. And what they essentially did is, I'm glad to see you're all taking notes, that's good. And what they started to do was allocate funds specifically for prohibitive to repair schools. So what we would do is we would submit a list of schools that we felt were prohibitive to repair based on this condition data. They would agree on, we would set some priorities, or the board would set some priorities. And the result of that really, over the course of the last five years, was we received two school replacement projects. So Van Cleek Hill Collegiate Institute and North Granville District High School were both funded under the Prohibitive to Repair Program. So under both of those, we received about $30 million for those two projects. To give you a sense of what the scale was of the provincial capital spend that was required overall, so all the prohibitive to repair projects, it was around $1.4 billion, of which our share was about $30 million. In addition, what the ministry did at that time, as well as they came out with the Good Places to Learn Program. So the Good Places to Learn Program was, we received about $32 million over several years through four rounds of GPCL. GPCL funding had to be allocated specifically towards designated requirements that those engineers found in the Recap Program. So we couldn't spend it on anything we wanted. We could, we could choose from this list that the engineers came up with and said, and we could spend it against those kinds of things. So as of pretty much now, that's all gone. We've spent that down and the program is now defunct. So I guess after 2002, the first few years after 2002, most of our renewal focus was driven by building condition. So it's no secret, we have a rather old and decaying roster of buildings. We have about 33 of our buildings have, are substantially constructed of Ciprax, which is a, it's like the Dream Whip of concrete. So if it gets water in it, it tends to delaminate and it causes problems. So Maitland Public School was, as you recall, mostly composed of Ciprax and got to the point of decay where we actually had to close the school. So we have about 30 other schools that are in a similar situation. And by, really by the ministry's measures of PTR, by 2020, we'll have about 25 schools that would be declared PTR by the ministry's old formula. So interesting times for us. To complicate matters, after around 2006, what you saw happen is the focus on capital shifted away a little bit from condition and more towards supporting policy changes that the provincial government put in place. So you'll recall, there was an introduction of primary class size caps, and what that does is when you shrink class sizes, you need more physical classrooms. So they tended to allocate capital towards supporting primary class size shrinkages. They also have had some major initiatives in the past few years specifically focused around energy. So you would see the Efficient Schools Energy Efficiency Initiative and also the Green Schools Pilot Initiative, both of which we participated in. But those, again, were specifically, funds were specifically directed at specific types of initiatives, and we've been really diligent about dutifully spending all that money on the required initiatives. It's not something that we didn't need to do, it just wasn't related necessarily to building condition. And then most recently, what you see is with the transition to the Early Learning Program, full-day kindergarten, of course, you basically double the number of enrollments for kindergartens and that has an impact on your capital as well. So they've been putting a significant amount of money at capital for supporting the Early Learning Program. So that's the last few years. And I guess if I were to sort of stop and take a breather and talk a little bit about what the status is right now, obviously what I think the province has found and we've found is that we've received funding for two PTR projects in five years. In order to get our share, the province has had to spend $1.4 billion, and we have 25 more to go in the next, you know, seven, eight, nine, 10 years. I think what we're seeing is that it's probably fairly unlikely that we're gonna get school replacement funding, given the current fiscal environment, for those, those schools. And that's just us looking into the crystal ball a little bit. If you, it took you $1.4 billion for us to get two schools, we have to get another, you know, 20. The province is gonna have to spend a lot to get their way out of that one. The other challenge that we found is that, under the old funding program with Good Places to Learn, we were not allowed to put Good Places to Learn capital funding to renew schools that were designated PTR schools. So you have this kind of problem where I have a school that's decaying, I'm hoping that it's gonna be replaced, but in the meantime, I'm not allowed to put any investment in it based on the province's rules. So that represented a bit of a challenge. So we had this kind of era where schools that were PTR were kind of, we were only allowed to do the minimal things to keep them limping along, just so that we weren't allowed to put this money in there. I think some other changes that you've seen happen is, again, I alluded earlier to the fact that boards used to be able to have a considerable amount of discretion with respect to how they raised money for capital projects and where they allocated it. Most of the funding that you see now, to a certain extent, is sweated towards specific policy programs. We've lost the ability to debenture by ourselves, so I can't raise long-term financing for a new school construction project on our own and allocate resources from it. And in fact, now the Ministry of Education has gotten to the point where they've asked us to, well, not just us, but they've directed all school boards, have to have approval for any capital project over $250,000. So I think what's happened now is we've been dutifully complying with that, but I don't think they know what to do with all the emails now that they're receiving about asking for approvals for projects. Because on a $20 million or $15 million budget, there's a lot of $250,000 projects. So that represents a big challenge for us. Going forward, you know, we try and, it takes us in a lot of cases, a year or more to develop a project. So to go into a school, to do a comprehensive condition assessment, look at enrollment, forecasting for the future, start developing what some alternatives might be for a given problem that you're facing at a school. And then at the same time, we're trying to grapple a little bit with, there's some scuttlebutt now, you see in the news about rethinking class sizes a little bit. So just as shrinking class sizes had an impact on capital, so will if the government eventually chooses to increase class sizes as a potential solution. That'll have an impact on capital. The rollout of the ELP program has had a big change for us, and there's just a number of other things that make it challenging for us to look into the crystal ball. In the meantime, one of the things we've done to do, and I'll wrap up here shortly, but a couple of things we've done to try and get on top of this, Director Thomas, for those of you who are, I'm not sure whether it's appropriate to say you're new to the board still, but we did a couple of years ago undertake to look at a study about, looking at some creative ways that we could redirect operating savings towards capital, and we did find, develop a business case that was independently verified that said we could potentially generate a $60 million capital fund to help us get on top of our capital problem. And that was presented to the ministry as well. And then in the meantime, really what our focus has been in the Facilities Department has been, you know, to grapple with the issues that we can grapple with. So picking away at, you know, a few parking lots a year, a few roofs a year, boilers, trying to support our policy initiatives as best we can. So putting, you're all familiar with the seven and 12 transition committees. And at the same time, what we're doing is looking at schools that we do feel to be hotspots for us for a variety of reasons and doing, and starting to develop those projects. And what developing a project means is, as I said, excuse me briefly earlier, is first of all, when I look at a school, we look at it really from a technical perspective along three lines. We look at it, excuse me, in terms of its condition. So what we tend to do is we tend to do a very thorough condition assessment that takes us probably in the order of three to four months to produce and probably about 100 pages of going over the school thoroughly to look at the condition. As a matter of course, real estate appraisals are part of that feasibility study. We look at the 15 to 20-year enrollment projections for that facility. We tend to look at a host of other things if we're looking at, if we, so schools what we tend to look at are along three dimensions. We look at the condition of the facility, we look at the capacity of the facility. So does it, does it have the capacity to hold the forecasted number of students or what's, what's the long, the stretch view gonna be? And we look at, a fancy term, the functional adequacy of the school. So does a school actually meet the needs, the program, and functional needs of the people that are in the school? So the goal there is really to capture schools that, you know, you might have adequate room and it might be okay condition, but the classrooms might be too small, it might not be accessible. It might not, there might be a variety of reasons why it's not working for the people in the school. And we start taking those three dimensions and starting to look at developing projects around schools that really represent the hotspots for us. So as it stands right now, where we stand with the ministry is that they have replaced the PTR language, not surprisingly. When you look at the number of schools that would be PTR, it would probably cause alarm with the public. The second thing that they have done is they have commissioned a whole new set of condition assessments. So the first time since 2002, they're sending out another group of engineers. The interesting thing about this is they've already passed through 25 of our schools. And what takes them a day to do in a school, we're spending, you know, weeks and weeks with engineers within the school to do. So I'm a little leery about what the results of those are gonna be. And in the meantime, we're really waiting to see how this shakes out. So the ministry is new condition assessments, a new piece of software that replaces Recap, which is the building inventory system. And there's not a real lot of clarity on what is replacing the PTR program. And so we're really in a bit of a holding pattern with those large-scale projects. But the nice thing about it is, is we have had some of the restrictions lifted with respect to being able to put capital investments in schools that are really, are really needing it now.
Thank you, Mr. Hobbs. Trustee McCray?
Um, you're talking about these hotspots, and I'm sure there's lots of them. What would you say to me, in terms of schools within the upper Canada district school board, are the primary concerns? Like in terms of hotspots? That through the assessments that our board has done, what would they be?
Mr. Chair, so you're looking for specific schools?
Schools, yes.
Well, I can give you a little flavor for...
That's what I'd like, yeah.
Yeah. And I think that the challenge is, is when you come up with a list of schools, depending on how you weight the factors, you get a different list, right? So from the facility standpoint, we tend to take a fairly technical view of it. Our real priority is emphasizing the continued safe operation of the schools. So we tend to place a probably a preponderance of weight on the condition. So what I would say, I would say, in Cornwall, Eastfront and Gladstone represents a project that looks fairly appealing to us. There's a variety of reasons for that. I think that we've done a formal condition assessment on Eastfront, and there's a very good condition argument to be made for that. I believe we have some direction on the books to consolidate Gladstone and Eastfront into a single facility, and I don't believe, I think it would be very challenging to accommodate the current population of both schools at either site. So that represents a challenge for us. And there's really no, I mean, I can get into some of the technical details of the condition of Eastfront, but that, to us, looks like, you know, a project that you can probably build a decent business case around. Another real hotspot for us in Kempville is Kempville Public School. And the interesting thing about that one is, as I mentioned earlier, we look at these things along three dimensions, so condition, capacity, and function. Kempville Public School is far and away got the, is, how do I put this? It is, the student population vastly exceeds the capacity of the school. The interesting thing about this is that the ministry already has an interest, has given us some money to do something to address the capacity. However, the nature of the site at KPS precludes us from building an addition that would house all the kids that go there. And I, once I build the addition, I would basically eliminate all the playgrounds and not have room to put further portables down. So you're really in a position there where I've got some money, I've got a capacity problem, the school is not really in good enough condition for us to put a good addition down, but I can't also, I can't also really, I don't even have the site or the space to put an addition down. So for capacity reasons and a little bit of condition, that one looks like a good project to us as well. And then from a straight condition standpoint, probably, Maynard, we would say, is probably the school in the worst physical condition within the board. Don't have the capacity problem there, but you do have a condition problem. And then if I were to go further down the list with conditions, you'd have, you know, schools all over the board, you'd have, like a school like Benson is also another candidate that's in rough shape. And at the... And at the same time, you have a, a host of other schools that, um, are experiencing capacity issues that can be addressed with, uh, portables. So, or not portables, I'm sorry, uh, with, uh, uh, an addition. And it would be suitable for the context of the school. So the schools that come to mind there would be Williamstown, Cambridge, Emers Corners, probably. All three of those represent, um, capacity issues that we're already starting to develop addition projects for as well. So those ones are the, are the ones that come to mind.
It's always a danger, you know, and one of the, you might want to speak a little bit to how we've handled, uh, capital in the past to really kind of avoid politicization of capital projects. That, uh, you know, once you start listing them, it can almost, like it causes unnecessary angst because when we describe it, it makes it sound one way. And the buildings, every single building is safe for students to be in today. And they're clean and, and dry. So it's not that we have that problem. So it's always a bit of a, a difficult issue to, uh, to talk about, um, in public and not, and ensure that the messages that get out are, are consistent with the actual issues at hand.
Trustee Swan?
I just wanted to say, I mean, I was familiar with the situation at both Benson and, and at KPS. And I know we're looking at Credo Solutions maybe for KPS. But I'm just wondering, I know it came up during two thousand and twenty about the facility condition being prohibitive to repair at Maynard. And I'm just wondering what plans are in place for that school?
That's a, that's a, through you, Mr. Chair, that's a very good question. So, um, the, the schools that, there's about ten schools that are, that we, we consider to be kind of the, from a condition standpoint, predominantly, um, the hot, the hot spot. So we have a, a formal project development process that we go through just because it's a bit of a gut check. Cause I think as the chair alluded, um, sometimes what happens is, uh, you, you have funny things happen where a school that looks a little rough around the edges on the outside, when you actually go and look at it from a technical perspective, tends to be not that bad. And then the flip side is you can have schools that look fine, that, you know, they're, you know, especially when you have kids in the school and there's artwork on the walls, it appears to be a great spot that is, um, can be, have elements that are a cause for concern for us. So at Maynard, we've taken it through the development process. Um, what we're doing now with the restrictions of the GPTL program lifted, we, we're taking steps to stabilize elements of it. Um, you know, to be completely honest, if, if we, uh, got an indication from the Ministry of Education that, um, there's no replacements on the radar for a period of time, um, the elements of Maynard that are causing concern are things like brick veneer, the septic bed, those kinds of things. They're not, they're not elements that, that would, that would threaten the safety of the, of the kids in the school. And we would probably be taking a more aggressive stance, just, just, just get on with starting to replace those elements and, um, come to grips with living with that school, that building as it is for the foreseeable future. And I would expect that what you see happen is, I mean, I'm, I would guess we'll get some more clear direction from the Ministry of Education on that within the next year. But at, at the, we have a really good handle on what's going on in that school and what needs to be stabilized. And we're actually now, especially you've seen some money invested there in a limited way for, uh, the R2L program there. Uh, you'll see us starting to do probably more of that as, as we come to grips with what the ministry's direction is on school replacement.
Go ahead, Trustee Swan.
Through you, Chair. Uh, just as a secondary to that, then, are we being proactive in the, the removal of the CIPREX in these schools? Um, instead of waiting till something happens like happened at Maitland and the gym ceiling started caving in?
Um, through you, Mr. Chair, it's, uh, unfortunately, the deal with CIPREX is it's not a thing you can remove easily. So, uh, it, because it is a structural component of the school, uh, in some of our schools, it tends to, to, you would literally have to take the whole school down. So, um, in cases like Pine View, um, in the last couple of years, we've replaced the gym roof there, which was composed of CIPREX. And I, I think I, uh, when you did your tour last year after, uh, on the board organizational meeting, I, I offered to hand some out, cause I have a chunk of Pine View's gym roof in my office.
I have some.
Yeah, there you go. Um, but, uh, what we do annually is we have an annual inspection protocol where, uh, staff get up in, in the elements of the schools and in the ceilings and inspect all the CIPREX elements. And, uh, we hit every school at least once every year and then have a formal reporting process. Um, really what the goal is with me, with CIPREX is controlling water, so keeping water out of it. And we've been really successful. So we don't have any Maitlands on our hands, uh, right now. So that's really, it's really a preventative maintenance, uh, program with that.
Trustee McPherson?
Um, two questions. Uh, one about accessibility. I know we're having to conform to some new regulations. Are they tying any financial assistance to accessibility?
Through you, Mr. Chair, no. Uh, right, uh, not as, not as yet. Uh, so, um, really what we're doing is, I've mentioned this at, uh, previous board meetings, is we take a rather pragmatic approach to accessibility. So we're very serious about when we have a student who wants to attend a specific school, then we do whatever we can to make, uh, as much of the school or to address their accessibility needs at that specific school as we can at the time, which includes, uh, stair lifts, uh, widening doorways, those kinds of things. But, um, that comes out of our regular renewal budget and there's not a specific allocation for that.
Okay, second question. I get asked this every time I go on Lake Eighty-Eight, what is the status of PDCI for potential replacement? It seems to have slipped.
Um, you don't have anything to add at this point on PDCI?
No, other than the fact that, uh, we've been through, again, the early phases of project development on that with condition assessments and reports and, and, um, talking to the municipality as well.
I think that probably the most, trustee, the most prudent thing, if you've got questions about individual schools, is to contact Jeremy and, and, you know, ask him to come out to school and walk you through it and, and point out things. Um, I think it's probably the most prudent way. Trustee McAllister?
Uh, Jeremy, I have a question with regard to the recommendations of the transition teams that are floating around. Um, a lot of the recommendations, uh, will require, uh, substantial fiscal changes to the building. Um, is that considered a capital expense? And if not, how are we funding them, et cetera, et cetera?
Uh, again, uh, through the chair, um, yes, all that is considered, uh, a capital expense. And, um, so, uh, we have a strategy, as you can see in your, uh, I think, I'm not sure whether the, actually that program budget is reflected. So, uh, the challenge for us is we set aside a proportion of our, our, um, capital budget every year for, um, the transitions. And then, to be completely frank about it, we try and make the recommendations. Uh, we try and fit everything that we can in, and if we can't fit it in, we try and stage it out to another, another fiscal year if we can. So a good example is, um, uh, St. Lawrence Intermediate in Cornwall. Uh, last year, they made some requests about, um, uh, restoring what was a former auto shop and had been converted to something else back to an auto shop. And the scope of that project was such that we could neither afford it or accommodate it within the time available. So we're moving on with doing that piece of work this year. And so on the bigger pieces, it's very likely that, um, some of the recommendations will be staged out to subsequent years if we don't have the time to develop and tender and, um, get the work done. But we've been, I think, quite successful in other schools with, um, making sure that the kids, uh, in the community get accommodated within the school safely on, uh, September first, that we do, we, um, take care of the sevens and eights and make sure that their program requirements are met, that we deal with things like bus safety and playgrounds and making sure that, uh, PA systems and bell times and lockers are all in place and the kids can be safely accommodated in the facility. And then, you know, if there are major changes, like, you know, we want to reconfigure the office and we can't get all of that work done, we'll, we'll typically, uh, try and stage that, stage that out. But in most cases, I think we've, we've had a good record of success at previous schools in, um, getting the bulk of the work that was requested done or an accepted alternative, acceptable alternative.
Thank you. Trustee Swan?
Through you, Chair. If there's a high, a higher-than-average absenteeism rate at a specific school or, um, illness incidence, uh, similar types of illnesses, do we go in and, uh, look at this, revisit the facility and, and see what kind of condition it's in, see if there's anything environmentally in the facility that might be causing this?
Uh, Mr. Chair, yes. Uh, actually, what we would do at that point is invoke the Health and Safety Group. And, uh, we have a number of companies that we use for environmental testing. Uh, and they would come in and depending on the nature of the, um, concern, they would perform the appropriate testing protocols. There's been a number of cases where, uh, there's been a perception that people may have been exposed to asbestos and those kinds of things. And, you know, we have a fairly, a very rigorous protocol to go in and test it. And then, you know, if there are adjustments to be made, um, we would make those adjustments. But we have a very, uh, a very strong, uh, protocol for abatement in the first place, so you don't really run into those problems. But yes, uh, we, we take, um, concerns and complaints seriously and, uh, work with Health and Safety to deal with that.
Trustee McDonald?
Uh, Mr. Hobbs, the, just in relation to Trustee McPherson's comment about, uh, the AODA, um, the Built Environment Regulation, uh, doesn't come into effect on two thousand and twenty-five, I think it is?
Yep.
Um, there's a requirement for, for everyone to, uh, to comply to that. Has there been any, uh, discussion with your counterparts across other jurisdictions to start to tabulate the costs to try and achieve, um, compliance to this, uh, this new act?
Um, not that I'm aware of, but I, uh, I was under the impression that perhaps OPSA submitted something with respect to the Built Environment, uh, proposal.
They really haven't done a heck of a lot from a built environment standpoint yet because it's two thousand and twenty-five. Certainly there's some general discussion out there. Municipalities have some concerns, obviously. So I'm not sure if AMO is, uh, involved to some degree. But, um, you know, I think it's understandable that we're, we're meeting the needs of the individual students. But if we, if we still have to, um, um, go above and beyond, um, that individual student at the school, there's, there's a fairly substantial amount of work required to become complete compliant. And that includes washroom, uh, facilities, that includes any lifts or elevators or whatever the case may be from, um, different, uh, elevations inside and outside. So, um, you know, I, I know it's, it's quite a ways away, but, um, it's, you know, twelve, twelve years away. You know, maybe some of us may not be here by then. But, um, should we start looking at, uh, planning some of that work today? Um, or is it something that we, uh, we need to, uh, make, um, OPSA become more vigilant on, on making that, uh, part of their mandate as, as far as being vocal about the costs associated to, uh, to school boards?
Uh, well, um, well, through Mr. Chair, I, uh, I absolutely agree with you. Actually, um, you know, part of our, our facilities department's stance is actually changing. We've spent the last several years in a kind of a reactive mode where we're responding to condition-oriented issues. And accessibility is one of, uh, a few thrusts that we're actually starting to get. Um, uh, shifting our focus to awards a more proactive stance. So in addition to, uh, energy efficiency and some other attributes of the facility, we're just starting to figure out how we actually take a more proactive stance and come up with a plan, uh, by school for these things in response. But I don't have, uh, I, I'm not aware of a, uh, sort of an overall global sense of what the cost would be to bring, uh, bring our schools up to the, the built environment standard. But I can certainly raise that with our, um, sort of provincial association and, um, see if we can compile some data or some estimates on what the retrofit cost would be.
Well, my concern, I guess, is in order to, to meet AODA, um, there are building code requirements tied into that. So not only do we have to use building code to meet the AODA, uh, pieces, but then as soon as we start touching something, we've got to meet all those building code requirements. So, you know, in some cases, our bathrooms may have to be completely removed and, and reinstalled. And some of our doorways, uh, may not be wide enough for classrooms, those kinds of things. There's a potentially maybe a, a point where our schools become prohibitive to upgrade based on AODA. Um, which, you know, this, I'm, I'm thinking older schools perhaps or those kinds of things. So, um, it's frustrating that, again, this is another one of these issues that the ministry, outside of the Ministry of Environment, has placed, um, things onto, uh, education with no, no impact on funding associated to it. So, thank you.
I have a question. Um, uh, we're all certainly aware that the ministry made a number of changes legislatively to mandate that boards have multi-year plans. We've had multi-year plans since two thousand and three, um, that I'm aware of. And we build in, you know, we, we build in visions based on, uh, some things that involve capital changes. Has there been any discussion in the ministry to change their way of looking at it? So to support multi-year plans rather than their narrow or, uh, their own particular, uh, policy ideas?
Uh, Mr. Chair, that's a very good question. Unfortunately, from our stance, um, uh, I think, I think we've been, um, I, I'm grateful for the funding we have received from the Ministry of Education through the various programs, GPTL, the PTR programs. Uh, but I, I have to say that it, to us at least, it seems that some of the criteria for the selection of projects is a bit opaque to us right now. It's, uh, I don't know what a good, a compelling business case looks like to them. So it's difficult for us to assemble, uh, it's, it's difficult for us to plan because you don't, you don't really have a sense of when your projects or your priorities might get in the queue or might get funded, right? Which, um, this necessarily means that you're going to have a different strategy the further, the further things get pushed out. So in other words, sooner, sooner or later, I have to stop waiting to do upgrades and, and do the upgrades. Um, I, I just, I get a, I get a sense that the, the, the formula is, or the approach is going to change at some point. But I could not tell you what the decision criteria are. So I think they want us to, to have multi-year plans. Um, but the, the, the challenge of having, developing a plan when you really don't have the levers to, to implement it is, is a big one. And I, I haven't really, um, received any, on, any guidance on that.
Yeah, cause there seems to be somewhat of a disconnect that if you, like they almost, at times, it's as if the building has no impact on your ability to, to deliver program or to support a particular community and, and their aspirations. And, uh, you know, at some point, they have to acknowledge that there is, um, we don't teach the same way we did when these schools were built. Anyway, any other, uh, comments or questions?
Trustee McCray?
Through you, Chair. I just have one more, and that was that you said that, so there's, there's no longer what they, you called the PTR program. And you felt that we were in a holding pattern and that they had done, uh, twenty-five of our schools already, the ministry. Is that correct? Have gone through a program where they've done an assessment? Has there been any indication when they'll be finished, this process that you're doing? Uh, and where that might go or?
No, uh, Mr. Chair, again, um, they've been through, again, twenty-five of our schools. We were allowed to select the schools they went through. So we, we, um, sort of tactically, I think the last time this happened in two thousand and two, we had no condition data of our own to val, to compare to what they came up with. And so what happened is we had no basis to contest their judgment on the condition of our schools. So tactically, this time around, we have commissioned this, we've been commissioning these rolling sets of condition assessments. And we, we asked them to go through the schools that we already had our condition assessments for, so we could start getting a feel for what, how their assessment would compare to ours and have some sound basis for, um, contesting it and making a good case for us. We have not seen yet a, the results or the fruits of that even initial pass, which was really quick, like a matter of days to go through, uh, twenty-five schools. Um, you know, I, it would be, um, I, I can't speculate on what the outcome would be. I would, uh, uh, if I were to wear a little bit of a cynical hat, I would say they're probably going to come out and say the condition of the schools is way better than it was ten years ago because of all the GPTL and everything that was put into it, and some of the pressure is now off. That would be my, my take, but, I mean, I, I couldn't speculate.
Um, the, um, studies that they did, the, uh, two thousands, is that when they did the first set?
Two thousand and two, I believe.
Two thousand and two. As you've been working through, uh, those schools, you found, your reports have been at considerable variance to some of theirs. Some of theirs that have said that schools were prohibitive to repair, your studies have found, in fact, aren't, right? So it's not even, they're one day, like they're, they're talented group they're sending through in one day, don't really get a good idea of what's going on.
That's correct. And the, the, the sort of converse of that is you have situations like Maynard where the value of replacing the septic bed was, they put on with something like forty-five thousand dollars, when in fact, it's, it's going to be more like half a million to a million dollars for a school of that size. So, you know, and they use that data as the basis for allocating the good places to learn funding. So the challenge that you have, and that's why this time around, we've kind of learned here and we want to know, we want to be able to have our own, our, our own really solid data. I don't, I don't think that the, um, some of the, the results of their assessments had anything to do with the qualifications of the people going through. I think it was more just, uh, it's too mu, there's, there's too much to be accomplished within the short period of time they have to do it. So you're just not going to get a very accurate shot at it.
So no one's none the wiser, right? Uh, Trustee Buckland?
Thanks, Chair. Uh, through you, I just wanted to, uh, ask, uh, again, about the, uh, I thought it was a great business plan. We said, uh, we go through the consolidation of Building Twenty and so on, uh, it, uh, It would allow over a period of time $6 million or so that we feel should be returned to the board in some other form, and the business plan was constructed, it looked excellent, and I handed personally to Minister Wynn at the time. Is there any follow-up on that that could be used?
The only, the last time we heard it, I heard of being mentioned was very obscurely referenced in the report, the Decline Enrollment Report. Remember that they came out after we did our work, but I haven't heard anything. Have you, Director?
Rick, are in trouble. I said thank you.
They'd use the money somewhere else, I'm sure, or using it. Trustee McCray.
To you, Chair. And my question is to David McDonald, trustee David McDonald. So what is the Ontario Public School Board Association doing to support provincial school boards with this issue regarding?
Part of our ongoing mandate is working through the funding formula. So obviously, from a funding standpoint, it's one of our top priorities, our key priorities that we continue to work on with the ministry. We make a case known to the ministry, I mean, it's a business case scenario that we continue to work on and put efforts forward to try and have funding review completed and additional funding associated to it. If it relates specifically to the AODA piece that I made a comment on, the primary focus, as I said in the past, right now from OPSA has been on the communications side of things, customer service communication aspect, because it's the imminent piece that has affected our boards primarily right now. So I think because 2025 is the built environment standpoint, we, OPSA and many other organizations really haven't looked at it to a full extent right now. But from a capital funding standpoint, it ties into the funding envelope that we continue to work on. You know, we talk about the 21st Century Education PD for trustees, the whole child. There are many, many aspects that we continue to work on. So it's on the agenda, it's talked about at any opportunity that we can. It's just, it's not the same agenda as the government at the time. So there are many, many opportunities. I think the government can review funding, but you know, we're going into, a bit of a soapbox right now, we're going into a situation with this government being minority government, high debt, very high competing demands for funds. And you know, if we were to, you know, put any money into where money is going to be reduced or cut or kept, you know, I don't know. They've got two other parties that they try to, they have to try and keep happy. Healthcare is rising costs associated with the baby boomers. I'm not sure. You know, is education going to get a A at this time? I don't know. I think we're thinking it's going to stay pretty steady, but again, the difficulty, I guess, from an OPSA standpoint is we need the Ministry of Education on a regular basis to try and get that information out. The minister has their challenge, ministry and minister have their own challenges about trying to get money from the Treasury. You know, the Minister of Finance is that Minister of Education to us, and they dole out funds to the different ministries, so they're making their cases. And it's one of those ones, what do I want to fight for most right now? And so class size potentially, you know, early kindergarten, those kinds of things is where the money is being diverted in some cases.
I think so, that, you know, the debate that, and it would be a struggle, I think, at OPSA because many of them aren't, don't have the detailed strategic plan that we do. So they aren't familiar with that way of looking at how you plan the future, but I don't know that it has so much to do about the funding formula than it has to do with the philosophy of the government and their attitude that capital, yeah, you know, they give you a little bit of money to maintain your buildings. Obviously, not enough because we're not able, you know, we have buildings that are not maintained properly. But they have this idea that they make these policy decisions, and you know, you look at the ones that they came through with considerable amount of funding for green initiatives that affected how many schools? Half a dozen?
Fifteen, I think.
Fifteen schools? Okay. Then there, you know, we have the money that came through on the class sizes and on the all-day, every-day. Now, we didn't, did we ask for these? Were these part of our plan? Was this our plan to get to a 90% graduation rate, to have smaller class sizes, or to have early education, or to environmentally improve the schools? I'm not saying that these things aren't important or don't have value, but until they get to the point where they fund us to allow us to manage our plans, that's really where the issue is. I mean, they could have just given us the same amount of money and allowed us to fund our plan rather than saying, you know what, this is the greatest idea of the day, and we're going to go ahead with it. And I think sometimes that's what, I don't know that there needs to be more money, it just needs to be handed out in a way that allows us to support our plan rather than, you know, their rather cryptic, mystical way of even handing out the money for prohibitive to repair. I mean, it's, no one understands it. It doesn't make any sense when you look at who gets the money and who doesn't. It seems to be handed out almost on a fairness balance rather than on a needs balance, and I'm not sure that's, that's my soapbox.
I wouldn't disagree with you, I mean, completely. But the reality is that when we lost taxing powers, we lost the ability to decide on our own priorities. The funding formula basically is in place so that it's a provincial agenda, and certainly it's more evident now with the current government. They, and the Premier has indicated that he wants to be the Premier of Education. Their agenda has been driven to the point where that's how the funds are being doled out. So in order to get commitments, and until we get to that point, you know, kindergarten, class size, those kinds of things, those have been, that's where the money that they're getting is being pushed to so that they're directing us to spend in those areas. You know, we're creatures of the province, and we have to realize that to some extent. And until we have the ability to have our own taxing powers or make decisions on bonding, creating funds to deal with capital projects, no matter what the US states have, you know, we're at the mercy of what the government decides to do on any particular day. Frustrating, but it's the reality.
Trustee McCray.
To you, Chair, just the last thing I wanted to say, not to Jeremy's presentation, what I was hearing, or my perception was restrict, they were very restrictive. In other words, you get the funds, but then they tell you how rare.
Their plan. It's their plan.
Yes.
Yeah, not our plan. Yeah. Yep. Well, thank you, Mr. Hobbs. Certainly appreciate that, and I know that you've done considerable amount of work to make sure that we have the most efficient and fastest reporting system and most thorough analysis in probably the province, so certainly keep up that and keep the pressure on them, and we know that we have a lot of, a lot of needs, and we'll figure it out. Sure we will. All right, thank you. All right, Rick, I know you probably feel a little left out because you haven't had anything to say for a little while, so we're now going to come back to you. You can talk to us a little bit about the Student Transportation of Eastern Ontario, where we are, and next steps.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The consortium is in fact about to be born as an independent organization off-site in Johnstown next, within the next couple of weeks. The motion that we're requesting the board to, this, the committee to recommend to the board is to formalize that relationship in a standalone entity so that when the, on February 1st, when the two groups come together, the people will no longer be board employees, they will become employees of the Transportation Consortium. All of the steps, practically all of the steps have occurred to allow that to happen. There is still a collective agreement, one collective agreement to negotiate for all of the QP employees within that, those departments, both boards' departments as they come together. The purpose of this is to make sure that we have a very effective transportation group and that we can maximize our revenue because the ministry has declared certain format, certain, that must be in place in order to achieve a high rating in their assessment. One of these is a standalone entity, and that's about to occur. So what we wanted this evening was to ensure that we had a clear motion from the board supporting that and allowing us to formalize that relationship. We have all of the documents signed, we have two trustees that are on the governance committee of the Transportation Consortium, as you know, and there have been reports from time to time back to this board, and the final steps are about to be put into place, and this is a very good news item. It's been a huge task. Ron Cottonum has been working tirelessly since he was appointed to the position of General Manager of the Student Transportation of Eastern Ontario Consortium, and this next step is going to be a great victory for both boards as we go forward.
One of the members of the committee of the board is trustee McDonald. Do you have anything to add at this point?
No, I think we've come a long way. I think at the beginning, I think I was a little worried that we wouldn't get to this point, so I'm very happy that we're at this point, and I think the information that we've received so far is that the staff involved are very at ease and confident with the progress that we're making and certainly in the future that it's, the organization, the corporation is heading. So it's, the intent down the road is to fund some efficiencies, but certainly the business pieces that we had to undertake so far have gone fairly well, actually, surprisingly well.
All right, thank you, trustee McDonald. Comments, questions? Just for the record, just so everybody remembers that trustee McPherson had declared conflict for this item. Just repeat that. Trustee Buckland.
Thank you, Chair. I'm very pleased with the way the transportation has moved, and a lot of accolade must go to Cottonum for the work that he has done. The idea of perhaps removing some of the political edge to it is gratifying to me because we were always in last place in the grant form, and previous historical precedents did not help us. On the other hand, you know, I can recall in '69 when boards came together, a lot of the small bus operators went by the way. In, when we had this latest amalgamation, the same thing happened. And now the fear is that with extremely large buses coming, one is an English firm, and I think there were a couple of American conglomerates running our bus system, that the small operator, and we have over 40 on our board, is doomed. And I wonder if it's possible to at least seek some assurance on that because we complained about, and OPSA was part of that, when this thing was announced that you required some kind of involved bid on the bus contract. And so we were able to get it stalled for six months, but the story out of Toronto was, well, the bureaucrats are just waiting, they'll let it settle down and we'll bring it in, and it's, apparently it's on the way again as of 2/12. So is that former process in place, is my question? And is there any guarantee that the very faithful and competent operators we've had in the past will continue to be allowed an opportunity to transport our children?
So I can speak to this. The, certainly both boards have shared a concern that we didn't want to set up a process that would put the small operator at a, in a position that they could not compete. And we have approached this multiple times with the ministry, and when they were here doing their first discussion with us, we peppered them with questions specifically on that, and they were very forceful that as long as your RFP process met the various guidelines, that you could write, you know, whatever into the RFP that you wanted in order to ensure that it was a level playing field. So, you know, I guess the trick that you'd want to avoid is the deeper pocket, say, of a larger organization to maybe for a period, small period of time to undercut a price, and then in subsequent, when the RFP came forward, and sustain a loss for a number of years to drive out the smaller.
Walmart syndrome.
That, in fact, it was up to us how we characterized the RFP. Now, I don't know how far we've gone down the road to look at what those options are inside the RFP, but that certainly has been our message to our new CAO, Ron, and I believe remains still on the books as a direction from the governing board. So, you know, as long as we can perpet, as long as we can do it within the guidelines, then I think that you can expect that's what will be done.
Could I add something to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Because the, the small operators are telling me, they look, they cannot run safety seminars, they cannot organize the PD and all of the professional work that's going to be required as a small group in comparison to some of these larger groups. So there should be something in our, in our procedure that says, you know, we are going to do the professional development ourselves and maybe take away, or some system which, again, allows them to participate in what the doomed is, it seems they will be.
Superintendent Gales, do you have anything to add? But I think that largely, we're going to do what we can in order to support a, we don't, it's not in our interest to see one or two suppliers. We want to see a competitive field of operators.
Absolutely. I know that it is an issue. It was in the papers recently as yesterday or today, where the moratorium was placed, ended on December 31st, 2011. We haven't heard that it's been extended, so the assumption is that that moratorium is now dead. Sorry about that. But in terms of some of the issues, for example, you talked about safety seminars and PD for bus drivers, and I think that, for example, I know that Mike Delaney, which is a reasonably small operator out of the Avonmore area, has a safety officer and does focus on safety, and some of the other operators are a little bigger, and they would work with the small bus operators to come up with team efforts in terms of professional development, and the board also works with the operators in terms of professional development. And we wouldn't see our role abandoned in terms of making sure that we're working with the operators for professional development. However, we definitely have been supporting the smaller businesses and the local businesses because we know that they are the mainstay of some of our smaller communities.
Thank you. Trustee McAllister.
Sure.
So is anybody opposed to? So is anybody opposed to, I'm sure I got my right paper here, to sending this on to board for approval? So the recommendation that would go to board that the Upper County District School Board transfer all student transportation activities to the Student Transportation of Eastern Ontario, known as STEO, consortium formed with the Catholic District School Board of Eastern Ontario effective February 1st, 2012. Anybody opposed to that? With consensus then to move that forward? Okay, thank you very much. So we'll look for that at the, at the board meeting. It's sort of a footnote to this. We've spent so much time, I think, getting to this point and, you know, trying to move things forward that, and one of the discussions we had with our new CAO, he said that, in fact, at some point in not the near, not too distant in the near future, sometime this, in the next few months, we're actually going to be ahead of many other boards that have been at it for quite a while. So despite the fact that we had a slow start, we're picking up speed, which I think is good because we've set our CAO the target of getting the, as high a rating as possible, the highest rating really, by the next review, which should occur in the next year or so. So we've given them a tall order because there is a significant financial penalty of being levied against both boards not being at a high rating, and there is, at this point, significant bonus to being at the high rating beyond just redemption of the penalties. So it's, this is going very well. And thanks to Rick, too, for his work on that. Director, do you have a comment on the STEO? Okay. All right, we have a private session to get back to. So we have to figure out how we want to do this, whether we want to go next door. Question, our cameraman, are you okay? How long would it take for you to get out? Five minutes? Okay. So we will stay here then and come back to the private session at 22. So we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting and then do the follow-up at the next meeting. So a motion to adjourn. Trustee McMillan, seconded by Trustee McPherson, all in favor. Oppose, that carries.